I'm here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all board members are present except Eric Nings and Dev Alm. And we'll move on to our student showcase, which is spring commendations, and Superintendent Hart.
Board, it's with great pleasure that we recognize some of our outstanding athletes and participants in different activities. The board has started this tradition years ago to be able to recognize outstanding work. Folks that have went on to the highest level through their hard work and dedication to be able to be on the biggest stage at the state or the national level. And that's why you're all here today. It wasn't by accident. We recognize that, you know, it took a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of overcoming barriers and a lot of just great work ethic to get here. We have our clay target team, which is a program that's been with our district for how long? Can anyone help me with that?
I think just shy of...
Eight years.
No, no, it's almost, it's high fifteen now.
Fifteen years, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of those programs that has been really emerging. And it wasn't around, right, like twenty years ago, but it now it's grown to be one of the most growing sports and activities in our state and in our nation.
The safest.
And absolutely, it really is. And we just take such great pride in that. So we're just so thankful that you're here this evening and that we could recognize you. Do we have anyone that represents the coaching staff here with us?
No.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do is I will say your name, and we'd ask you to come up. I'll give you a certificate. And then our board, the board wants to shake your hand and acknowledge you and thank you. And we'll kind of get through everybody. It won't take long. And then we'd like to bring everybody up for a picture with the board. And this is, again, this is something that's called spring commendations, and it's a designation from the school board to your outstanding work. So again, thank you very much. Does any board member have anything you'd like to say?
No words.
No speeches?
It's been a fun year watching these athletes out there and seeing them shoot every week. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so I'm guessing that not everybody's here. But again, thanks for the people that are here. I'm gonna do my best with your last name. Is Drew Franz...
Tussel.
Franzel. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Here's your certificate. If you can just hang tight, we'll bring up... Oh, boy. Tyler?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Tyler Lambrecht.
There you go.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. How about Bert Lee Bishman? Bert Lee's not present. Reed Wesley.
Congratulations, Reed.
Kynan Miski is not present. And Ryan Hecht. Not present. Is there anyone I'm missing?
Nope.
All right. Gentlemen, is there any words of wisdom you'd like to share with the board or anything you'd like to say about your season?
It was a fun season.
It was fun.
Yeah, maybe this year, how did you end up, each of you, how'd you do this year? How'd you end up?
I think statewide, I placed, I think I was in the top twenty for state overall.
Third.
Oh, was it third for state?
Yeah.
Oh, so third for state. And then national level, I was, I think I ended up placing within the top fifty.
It's very impressive.
Yeah, that is impressive. How about you?
Um, state I took first.
State champion.
For Alexandria State, and then for Prior Lake State, I think I was fifty-third with a ninety-five. And then at Nationals, I shot, I shot a ninety-nine, that put me on, what was it? Twenty-seven?
Yeah.
One hundred seventeen hundred.
All right, super cool. How about you?
I was at eighty-seven at state, then going to Nationals.
Okay, awesome. Well, could any aspirations to take this to the next level for any of you? What is the, is there any place that you can go other than recreation?
There is college, colleges.
College?
Yeah, there are college teams, yeah.
All right, well, very good. Let's get one more round. And we're gonna get a good picture with you all. And then you guys can get in front.
Just look at the guy in the middle. He's probably good enough.
Awesome. Anyone?
Thank you.
Wait, wait, I like that single better. Thank you.
Nice to meet you guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, it's nice to see you.
You don't think we have anyone here from golf, do we, or track and field? No? Okay. Well, you're all welcome to stay for the whole meeting. Hot times, people leave, but that's up to you. We won't feel bad if you leave. Thank you so much. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Thank you.
These speakers are on, and like, I noticed that it's... You're like, your microphone's on. Yeah, just be aware that those are on, and, I mean, you will pick up anything that you say.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just that's what it was causing there.
Unplugged.
Oh, gotcha.
Then they can't hear us. Get our tinfoil hats. It's hard for Emily to do the minutes. She's fine.
She'll just make it up. It'll be okay. I don't know how to unplug this. I don't know if it's gonna go like that. Breaking it?
Honestly, this is probably the first time they've ever been plugged in. I think so, yeah.
Oh, really? Is that why we noticed it?
They're unplugged all the time.
Yeah.
They plugged them in at City Council because someone complained in the audience.
Oh. Oh, all right.
Well, do you think we should have...
No. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. We can just talk really loud.
I don't know if anybody ever listened to anything, but...
All right. There are no citizens' comments. We'll move on to board member committee reports, starting with Eric.
I think I just had finance. That was all I really had this month, is finance before tonight.
Okay. Don?
I had coffee with Ben. I think that will be it.
Chad?
I had the agenda planning and then a plan that's ready today.
Okay. I had the executive meeting and agenda planning. And I also wanted to bring your attention to the MREA conference at Craig's is November twelfth through fourteenth. But the early bird registration is August, is by August fifteenth. And we get a reduction if three of us go. So think about that. I think Don and I are both interested. I've never gone before. So we pay for that organization, and so if we would all go, that'd be great.
What's the, what were the topics or...
Uh, you got an email.
Okay.
Yeah.
It looks interesting. I think my husband thought it might be, so I'm not sure how. But I'm gonna try. It looks really interesting.
Yeah. Okay, Melissa.
I think it's just the finance meeting today or committee meeting.
Okay. Very exciting. All right. Superintendent Barton, there is no student council, so that's good.
Yep. You know, it's been a good summer. It's a time where a lot of folks, we try and get them to be away and use some of their vacation. So it's a little quieter, but that's, you know, that quiet time is really probably gone already. So things are gearing up. I'm finishing up all of my end-of-the-year evaluations with all of our admin and our direct report that I supervise. So let's, you know, spend some time with that. There's quite a bit that I've been working through that we'll talk a little bit about tonight that Michelle will focus on, lots of projects. Some projects happening, and every one of those projects are in various stages and have different dynamics associated with it, but they're all moving forward, which is good. Lots of work on the long-term facility maintenance plan that will be referred to tonight. Michelle's gonna talk to you a little bit about budget planning for that following year. We are thankful that we have our, all of our hiring up to date at this point. Knock on wood, we don't have any new hires, which is important. Although in years past, we have, we have some late ones, and then we do need to scramble. We will be keeping our eye on our class numbers and enrollment for each of those classes. So be prepared for me to send an email to keep you up to date, you know, if one of those groups does get to be larger than what we had projected. You know, hopefully that happens. That's always a good problem to have, what gets. We're still shy of what we projected for kindergarten. I believe we projected two-twenty for kindergarten. And the last I saw, I think we were just under two-ten. Which, you know, we're hopeful that we'll hit that. Again, historically, we will get quite a few at the beginning of August. So again, we'll be monitoring that as well. We did start our summer, summer programming. We have about a hundred and fifty students in for that K through seven. And we've made a lot of progress in those programings. And Jessica and her team has really led the charge. And we really have to a point where we're feeling about as good as we've ever felt with that. You know, we're gearing up for planning for transportation, all of our back-to-school materials, and hoping to go out to all of our team members and all of our families. Believe August tenth is the date that we've set. So all of those letters and, you know, creating, we've made that all paperless. So that's, we're working to get the entire website created so that registration process can occur. Planning for back-to-school, you know, new teacher orientation week. Our team members back for that week. You know, please anticipate that I'll be inviting you in for that district day to, you know, serve and greet staff for breakfast and lunch and those kinds of things. And...
Do you know what day that is off?
Well, it's gonna be that, it'll be that, I believe it's that Wednesday before the first week of school is when we've been doing that, and I don't...
Thirty-fifth, maybe? Thirty-first is the Thursday, I think.
The thirtieth is the Wednesday before. Yeah, so that's all staff day.
So the first day of school would be September fifth. So that would mean, yeah, the thirtieth would be the day that we would do that. I think I'll end my remarks with that, unless you have any specific questions.
Okay, we will move on then to approve the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So, motion made by Don, second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes from June twentieth. Motion made by Chad, is there a second? Second, second by Don. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. We'll move on to accept the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Melissa, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Chad, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to mention one thing. And I don't know if anybody's listening, but we give, we were mentioning the finance meeting before, like, maybe the weekend before, we could get some updates because it's kind of hard to read it on the day before. That's the only thing I want to add to attachments.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving down to information, ten A is budget analysis. And I assume that is Michelle. Yes. With Ben. Ben will talk too.
I'll talk as much as you want.
All right. This is actually a budget analysis, not for next school year, but for the following school year. If you look to the left of the, where it's, I got those two little boxes. I've got the twenty-two, twenty-three revised. We are currently in the process, just starting the whole, closing the books process, which takes a little bit. And so we're still not to the point where we know where we might land with fund balance, whether we will be at that three-point-seven or closer to the four-point-five, or even better. We just don't know yet. But that is not what we're discussing tonight. The twenty-three, twenty-four adopted is also there. We adopted that budget in June, and we are looking okay, pretty good for twenty-three, twenty-four. We actually have a, just slightly under a three-hundred thousand negative, and that is such a small amount of money in our almost forty-million-dollar expenditure budget that, you know, it's not a concerning number. So that's all looking good. But of course, twenty-three will drive what our fund balances will look like going forward. But what we did is we took our twenty-four revenue and expenses, and we're looking at what we know today. So if you go to the bigger box. So we're adding on the two percent per state, which is about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand for our district. And then under the expenses, we have thirty-nine-three for the starting number, and we're adding an estimate for salary and benefit increases. We are adding, at this point, it's just busing and unemployment, no other categories. And then, of course, the Fund Nineteen, which is, we call it Fund Nineteen, but it's the COVID, the last of the COVID money coming off that is paying for ongoing staff. So that's one-point-one million. So as you can see, the thirty-nine-five and the forty-two-five don't match up. The three numbers in the middle, the one-point-one, the four-forty-five, and the one-point-six, with only four-hundred-and-eighty thousand coming in, that we know of today, coming in for ongoing revenue, is going to create some challenges for twenty-four, twenty-five. It's hard to think when you're in three different years. This isn't a big discussion tonight. It's just to keep everybody aware that that is coming up and that we will have a challenge as we work through the budget process. And there's some things we don't know. We don't know enrollment yet, whether we've made the enrollment target for next year and if we will exceed. Legislature's gonna go back in session, even though it's the second year of the biennium. They may change what they are proposing, what they have given us. They may add to it. That has happened in the past. So we will just see, compensatory could go up or down. For now, we know it will be stable because the state has guaranteed that if it goes under, they will not dock us, but for the next couple of years. But if it goes above what we had, we would get more money. So we will have to see with those numbers. There's quite a few numbers we don't know. So any questions, concerns?
I think the big idea here is, if we look at worst-case scenario, how from, you know, how this last year ends up, and then how this next year goes, you know, we will be dipping far below that ten percent that we have in policy for fund balance. And we need to be monitoring this monthly as new information comes in and be able to be far enough out in front if we need to potentially consider a referendum or an operating referendum, which is, again, we're one of the few districts in the state that do not have one. But it's too early to tell. Now, we are hopeful that we're gonna underspend our budget from this last year. As a matter of fact, right now preliminary numbers state that we have ninety, we've only spent ninety-eight percent of our payroll. And that's pretty much, the books are closed with that, or pretty close to being closed with that. That's a good sign, which would mean we're not, potentially we're not gonna be dipping as far into the fund balance as what we have in the budget here. Next year, for example, if we underspend our budget, there's a potential that we can add to our fund balance a little bit that could offset what we are anticipating a very difficult year next year. So again, it's too early to tell. We just need to monitor it monthly. And you, I guess, hope for the best, but we need to be prepared for the worst. That's all I got.
Great. Anything else on that budget analysis? Oh, I'm good. And we'll move on to the LTFM projects and plan. All right, so if you recall, we mentioned that we would be bringing a revised budget back to you because we, with me out and not being able to do the work to finish while I was out, so we have an additional list of LTFM projects, which I believe we had a preliminary list here a while back. We do have numbers for everything. I went into a lot of detail for the finance committee. But everything that is highlighted in blue, which is just about everything, actually, everything that qualifies for LTFM is on the project list, is in the budget either in Fund Six or Fund One. There, you see some highlighted in reddish-maroon color. That is health and safety projects. Like Keith just wanted to have that all on the same list, so he could just go right down the list. You will note that LED lighting says it's not eligible for LTFM. There has to be a reason that we're switching out, you know? And we do have lighting that goes, of course, doesn't work. So when that happens, we do change them out to LEDs. But just to go in and do the gym as an example and upgrade it to LED is not a qualification for LTFM. So we'll have to figure out, you know, we'll just keep doing it the way we've been doing it. The intermediate school actually has been all completed because that is, is not on there. Do we have any questions about the additional list?
For the LED lighting, have we worked with the city to see if there's any rebate?
There are, and every time we do an upgrade with LED lights, so like the weight room, because we did do that whole area that was... The operations secretary sends all that into the utilities to get the rebate. Okay, so yes, absolutely. Anytime we work with HVAC, there's money. Usually there's for efficiency, get some money back. Also with your kitchen equipment is on the list. So we have a whole list of items that our operations secretary follows and makes sure that we are sending in for reimbursement or rebates on them. With things that are on health and safety, are they being done? They're just not part of LTFM? They are part of LTFM in Fund One. Okay. So I'll show you the budget. It went from about a hundred-and-forty-five thousand to one-ninety-three for health and safety to include all of them. Part of that is the railing to the bleachers at John Harvey. I have an estimate in there of what that might be because we don't have, based on what we did with the indoor gyms. So hopefully we're somewhere close, but we may be a little off on that. A lot of this is fall protection that is required. And the acoustical panels in the music area and the weight room also qualify under LTFM, and that's for hearing protection. And that's a good chunk of money at thirty-seven-five.
So you're gonna see that this is on for the board to approve, and that's because it is in statute, the board has to approve this every year. The tenure plan, as we've discussed in finances, that is really something that's flexible and is constantly being changed. So, I mean, it's something that's looked at all of the time. And, you know, the board's gonna approve it, but there'll be some modifications of that over time. So, and then I will sign off and send a document to the Department of Combat when the board hopefully approves it.
We also have an updated budget for LTFM attached underneath the additional projects. This is where all those additional projects, so you see the health and safety total is now a hundred-and-ninety-three, forty-three, based on our normal health and safety, which is typically around that one-forty, one-forty-five mark. On the intermediate school, we're gonna put the two sets of doors in Fund One that are on the outside. And the middle school has some contencing units, and then we have about two-thirds of the tennis courts that, you know, I'm estimating how much will be, you know, in twenty-four because part of it, of course, was in twenty-three. The normal two-hundred thousand for maintenance is broke out over roofing and surfaces and those kinds of things, electrical, for a total of seven-hundred-and-eleven thousand in Fund One with a current year variance of thirty-five. So our fund balance is actually twenty-two up there. That fund balance will hold.
I'm really sorry. We're just dropping off keys that we rented a facility for. I don't know. We're supposed to drop it off in City Hall. I don't know, we're supposed to drop it off in City Hall.
Sure, is it, did you rent it through the city?
Yeah, it's the city, the civic center, we rented it.
Sure, we'll be happy, we'll be happy to pass that on.
Thanks, guys.
Sure, and this is from what organization?
Um, we just rented the civic center for the game, so.
We'll get it back.
We just wanted to secure it.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Yep.
If you go over to the bond projects, we have two bonds, the abatement bond, which is parking lots, and the LTFM bond. Now, as I mentioned, everything that was on, that qualifies for LTFM is on this list. It ties up to the 3.4 million that we have in revenue. The folding gym wall actually is split on the 10-year plan, which would be in, in out year, is split between Fund 6 and Fund 1. But I can tell you, next year we'll have many projects on the list again, out of this list to do yet. And I can tell you that, of course, they will probably be different in expense than what we actually have on this list. It's kind of a moving target. The intermediate dish room, we received the plans, plumbing, plan was approved by the state, so that should start moving forward. We have ordered the dish machines for both middle school and the intermediate school. The intermediate school, though, is being gutted, plumbing, electrical, flooring, painting, all that is happening in that little space. It's a, you know, a lot of stuff. The high school structural lift is, if you recall, we had that structural lift up there that, that didn't need code, that we took down. We are now putting that structural lift back up. That's in the process. The domestic water is completed. The high school roof and the buildings and grounds roof, it looks like at least the high school roof will not be completed until next summer, even though we do have a bid out. Those bids should hold solid because it's their schedule, not ours, that's the problem. And then they might be able to do the buildings and grounds roof later this fall. They don't want to do the high school roof when there's students there because of the smell of the tar. HVAC automation phases and control phase are in process. Egan comes out and does that, that's their product. We, we have the music area ventilation, the kitchen area ventilation, those two projects still need to move forward. We've got the initial paperwork done, but we've got to get a, a couple more quotes and then we will start ordering equipment. Usually we're looking at it nine to 10 month delay on the equipment that comes in yet for HVAC. The high school bathrooms are gutted, completely gutted. They have to have the plumbing plan review back from the state of Minnesota. I'm assuming that will come in the next couple of days before we can start putting those bathrooms back together with new plumbing, electrical. And again, they are completely gutted, completely, you know, you're talking, they're doing stuff inside the walls, kind of gutted. Phase 3 for the controllers will not happen until next year. The flooring pieces will not happen until next year. And the folding gym wall also would not happen until next year, the following year. So those are the LTFM projects and a quick update of where we are with them. Tonight you approved, so I'm gonna go back up to the parking lots. The parking lots, you approved tonight on the consent agenda, calling for bid on the middle school parking lot. We got a $538,000 quote back from Umen and we felt that was a large enough amount of money that we felt we needed to go up for bid. You can do a change order for a certain amount of money, but we still felt it was, it was too large. So I'm not saying that it's gonna come in cheaper, but at least then we will know that we have competitively bid it and should get the best numbers.
With the baseball lot, right?
Yeah, over at the middle school. Yes. Student services parking lot is tore up and waiting for surfacing, which they will probably do at the same time at the high school. At the high school, I'm sure you heard about that little foundation they found. That is not a concern, we'll be able to move forward with that. But when they dug up where the gas lines were supposed to be, they weren't quite where we thought they were. They are in the way of us running pipe for the stormwater piping. And the city is telling us we need to move the gas line so that will most likely delay that project by a week. They're gonna try and make up time on the weekends. So that's what I know on the high school parking lot. Any questions? We do need a parking lot for the first week of school, otherwise it will be a mess.
Kinda dusty.
Yeah, the way it looks right now. That's all I have on that, unless there are questions. And this all rolls into the 10-year plan that is under action that we have to approve for the state of Minnesota.
All right. We'll move on to Tennessee, the first reading of policy. There's a list of summary of changes. Don, do you want to address any of that?
There was a couple that came down, like 5, 16.5, that was a new one that just came out of session and most of them were just bringing them up to MSBA's updates. They're really going through their policies right now, so that's why we have quite a few changes.
And then the last information is the student transportation handbook, and I think Ben will address that a little bit.
Yeah, I just wanna let the, the board know that, you know, after every year, we have an opportunity to reflect on what went well each year and areas that we'd like to see some improvement in. And certainly, we do that in all areas, but in particular, transportation, you know, we're pleased with how things went, but not satisfied. There was definitely some room and area for improvement, you know, some issues that we had to work throughout the year on. And one piece in particular was the variant, the variability between student behavior in school versus on the bus and some of the increased issues that we were seeing on the buses and to make sure that we just had consistency on all of the buses in terms of, you know, expectations, how we're redirecting and how we're, you know, working through situations when maybe a student may make a poor choice. And we really felt like we needed to work to tighten things up and review our procedures for buses and our handbook associated with student discipline. And basically, we just tightened things up a notch. And our hope is, and our plan is then to share that and articulate that with our families and also our student body and really reinforce that we expect our, our student behavior to be every bit as good on the bus as it is in school, right? And I, I do believe that although being firm sometimes, that can come off as a negative thing, I think that this will be received positively. I do believe that our students and our families do expect things to be dealt with in a firm manner and, and that's just what this reflects. So I wanted the board to know that that's something that we think is important and we want your support, you know, in our implementation of that as we move into this next year.
And I'm gonna add one thing. Typically, we have not had parents sign off on the student expectations for transportation. So this year we are going to, just like they do the student handbook, they will also be signing off on this. So hopefully that sticks a little more, the expectation of how we act in school is how we act on the bus.
You know, and sometimes you may have heard the phrase, bussing or transportation is a privilege, not a right. And, and the reason why that is said many times, because I believe that's directly out of the statute. And, and I think it's something that we just need to reinforce again with our students and our families and, you know, we, I guess, bottom line is the number of chances given will be decreased. And if a student, you know, really has a difficult time with self-control on the bus, they just won't be riding the bus. So that's the one short of it.
How many buses have bus monitors? Is that a lot or a few or none or?
It would only be, only be buses that have a student that is, it's specifically articulated in that student's IDP that they would need to have a bus monitor. I guess in a perfect world, if money was no object, we would have a monitor on every bus, right? Because we all know that the number one priority for the bus driver is to transport, drive a bus safely, right? And sometimes the environment makes it very difficult, especially when the weather's dangerous. So then when you, you know, have the added stress of students and what students are doing behind you, that makes it more difficult.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll move on to the action portion of the meeting and we'll do the LTFM budget. I will look for a motion there. A motion?
Most second.
Motion made by Alyssa to accept the revised 23, 24 LTFM budget as presented and second by Chad. Is there any more discussion? Hearing then, we'll vote by roll call, starting with Melissa.
Yes.
Sue, yes?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move on to 11B, the 10-year LTFM plan. I'm looking for a motion to accept the 10-year plan resolution as presented. Motion made by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eric. Is there any discussion? Hearing then, we will also vote by roll call, starting with Don.
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sue, yes?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move to 11C, the continuous improvement plan. We looked at what those changes would be last board meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the revised continuous improvement plan as presented. So moved. Motion made by Don, a second by Melissa, is there any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There were no additions to the agenda. The future meetings are listed there and I will entertain a motion for sure. So moved. Motion by Don, second by Sue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.